Okay, tonight's meeting is talked in the explaining board for March 18, 2025. Following is the agenda for the meeting to be held in the municipal building, 25 Lennox Avenue, on March 18, 2025, beginning of 7:30. Formal written advance notice is required by NJSA 10,4-1 at sec. As we provide you with this meeting at least 48 hours in advance of today, given the time, date, and location, and to extend over the time, the agenda of this meeting. Such notice stated, frontal action may not be taken. The notice was, one, posted on the bulletin board outside the offices of the municipal clerk reserved for this and other similar announcements. Two, provided to suburban trends, the newspapers designated by the borough council to receive such notices, and three, filed with borough clerk. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, nomination under God, indivisible, liberty just as for all. Welcome home, Astronauts. Yes, say friends.
Hot stuff.
Well done.
That was cool.
Okay, we're not having any open offers because we did that last time. We have approval of bills for Colliers Engineering.
Welcome.
I'm sorry?
Welcome.
Oh, sorry, yeah, welcome.
Okay, Mr. Simone?
Here.
Mr. Otto?
Here.
Mr. Trost?
Here.
Mr. Dr. Pendexter?
Here.
Mr. Balby?
Here.
Mayor Sarah will not be present. Councilwoman Kilburg?
Here.
Mr. Bootsma?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Okay.
Andy Brewer? Andy will not be, any engineer or planners for this meeting tonight.
Okay, thank you. Ministry of Regular Meeting, February 18, 2025, and we all had a chance to review it. So, what is your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve in second. Did anyone have any comment or discussion on the minutes? That was Trost and Balby you got?
Yep.
Okay. No? Okay. Vote for both, please.
Good luck. Mr. Simone?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mr. Trost?
Yes.
Dr. Pendexter?
Yes.
Mr. Balby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kilburg?
Yes.
Mr. Bootsma?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, approval of bills, so this is something new. We're being asked to, we had to take a vote on this of some kind, or just, what are they looking for? Vote. A vote? Okay. So, Colliers Engineering and Design Professional Services. I mean, I just want to make sure that we know what project it's from. So, when you see a invoice, 2500366.
So, this is for February's bills for 714, 720 Hamburg Turnpike, which has not come to the board yet. And 735 Hamburg Turnpike. Engineers were reviewing documents and professional services.
Okay, now, here's my concern. We're being asked to approve a bill, and we submitted an application we haven't heard, so we know nothing about what they did, or how they did it, or for what reason, and yet we have to approve it? I have to find out.
It's a bill, we need to see the bill.
I have a problem with that.
Okay. We can't see the number, we gotta see the actual bill.
I don't, I'm preferring not to take a vote on that, and you can tell Mike that that's the problem.
That's fine.
One of the other members here is that same thing.
Oh, I don't think you'll have, I don't think they'll have a problem with all of them. The idea of this is this, is they, the engineers, and me, and the planners, all are retained by you, and do work for you.
Yes.
Somebody else cuts the check. So, they are not really revealing what you're desiring here, you want to see what was done. So, the person that's writing the check really has to rely on you to say, yes, that's legitimate work, falls within the scope of what they've obtained for.
These are all coming out of escrow.
Yeah.
Not the planning board, escrow for these accounts.
Yep. All of those things, and they should be approved, that's completely legitimate, that's, and I think that's the goal here, and, but, you're absolutely right, you shouldn't, I don't think any of you should be voting on approving a bill that you don't know what was done there.
And in the past, it's been the chairman of the board who has approved them, so it didn't go to nobody. But every, every meeting, Colin presented me with bills that I looked at.
Yep. And just genuinely, they would like everybody to, like the board as a whole to do it.
Okay.
I understand that, but obviously, maybe we should be voting on something.
Well, this is new, so we'll get the procedures down, and then for next month.
I don't think you'll feel college to wait a month because we'll have to have it funded.
So, okay, approval of bills is on hold. Thanks, Bill, for doing that. It's got your name on itself.
Oh, my God.
I'm in that mood tonight, I'm sorry. There's nobody in the audience, so.
You are on TV.
Enjoy the laugh, people.
So, there is a few added correspondence, as the agenda had changed, and I did give you all copies of the ordinance that was included in tonight's agenda.
Okay, so you have the memo from Liz Bradsniss on the Borough of Riverdale.
They're all emailed to you, those first three were emailed to you, the ones following it, you're clapping your hands.
For their new pump and turnpike redevelopment plan, next one from Liz for Wayne for their ordinance for land redevelopment, third one's letter from Lennington Burnick, that's a freshwater wetland permit with the, sorry?
Are you going to continue on that just a little?
Yeah, okay. The West Lennox Avenue Bridge, which is right down here by Max, and the bridge at Herschfield are being replaced by the county, and so they need the permitting to have that done, and it's in design. I don't know if the Herschfield is completed on design yet, but that's supposed to go first, and then this one will go second, and.
I thought it was the other way.
I'm sorry?
I thought this one goes first.
Well, Mike had told me the other way around, whichever, it doesn't make a difference, whatever one gets done first. They were both done around the same time, so they both need to be replaced. Did you have a comment you wanted to make about it, Bill?
Yeah, it talks about, obviously, this is getting a wetland permit for them to do the work right in along the river, but they also mentioned about having to bring in a minor amount of fill to, for regrading, to make the approach to the bridges smooth and so forth, and if we have the ability to require that they bring in certified clean fill, I'd prefer that we do that somehow. I know it's not a site remediation program, project, but since this is town property, you don't want them bringing in anything from, I don't know, pumping planes crossing, or whatever, or from some highway project down in Patterson, or something like that, if they can show that it's certified clean from the origin, or sampling, or DEP requirements to show that it's clean. I think that would be best interest of the county.
You can send the recommendation to the administrator, and then he can follow it up with the county. You need help on that, just let me know. Okay, speaking of the corner, oh, actually, it's Wayne, what are you going to have with that landfill down there? The thing, the mountain gets higher and higher, is that even half the region?
This lion has no opinion about that, I'm sure.
They're trying to close it, I think Wayne's trying to close them down, so.
So, why can't they? I guess it's in the courts?
I have no idea.
And they can't put an injunction on that to stop from adding to it?
It's gotta be twice as high as that it was in September.
It was closed down for a while.
It was closed for a while, and they started counting down. Dozen, fifteen dump trucks parked there every night, and.
But with all of the regulations, that they stop projects cold in our town here, I mean, there's many times they've actually, we had it stop being in the river when we were doing cleanup, because the EP said so. They can't force that. That's crazy.
Well, they have the, if you go around the jug handle that comes out of North Pumping Turnpike in 23, if you go around that jug handle, table of leaf piles right there next to the river. The town dumps leaves there, and stockpiles leaves, it's right next to the river. It's in the floodway.
And they're not being very good stewards, and they could do whatever they want, I guess. Okay, I just was curious, since you mentioned it. Another memo from Liz, vending the downtown redevelopment plan, 190-84, another one from Liz, ordinance 2512, authorizing tax exemption and payment in lieu of taxes, in connection with the redevelopment plan for Block 2400, Block 1, and an assessment in lieu of taxes for 61 QF. Another one from Liz, an ordinance permitting Chapter 7, Section 730, turns prohibited, prohibiting left turns between 4:00 and 6:00 PM into the car wash and where. And lastly, an ordinance permitting the specific penalty for violation of parking prohibition for snow pounding removal. That's a lot of resolutions. Ordnance is rather. Guys been busy, Lisa?
Yes.
Okay, there are not, there's nothing on the agenda tonight in the way of applications, there's no conceptuals, no one has come back to do anything, as far as I know, so there are new and unfinished visits, there's nothing also, so we'll have public discussion, and then comments by the board as well, so opening to the public session where there are no people, so I'll close it right away, and new, I mean, the public discussion is over, so our discussion, you want to talk about the open space?
Yeah, I, as you know, I'm now the liaison to the Open Space Committee, and I, I met with Mike Shakatana, who I understand is, works with Karen Murphy on open space issues, and Mike took me down to show me the garage, as they call it, Herschel Park, first time I'd ever been in that, and all the discussion that they, they had at the open space was regarding the fieldhouse, and not the garage, but anyway, to sum things up, they submitted two plans, the DEP, for renovation of the fieldhouse, two of them have been turned down, they got recommendations back from DEP, so they're revising their plans, they're going to resubmit it, and hopefully they'll get approved. The only other thing was playground equipment, which has been ordered and is six weeks out, and when that comes in, they'll, they'll put it in. That's about it.
Thank you. Lisa, did you have anything?
No, not tonight.
No? No? Fine. Come on. Sean?
No.
Okay. The only note mentioned is I went to the council meeting last week, and they had the formal second reading of the property on 61 Q Avenue, the old gas station, and there was two parts to that, one is for the zoning variances, and one is for the pilot approval. If I'm misstating anything, just jump in. So, the council considered both, and named it up approving both, with one exception on the variances, I believe. They had a lot of discussion about it, they relied on the planning board's comments, we did bring up, they did bring up, and there was public comment on the issue of the studio apartment, and the applicant indicated they are very likely to get the extra parking places from the county, so they probably will go with a higher number of homes, or rentals, and it seems like that, that'll be ready to come to the planning board for its formal site plan. This was a process because the redevelopment's involved, where it goes redevelopment, and then goes to the council, and it goes to the planning board, then it goes back to the council, and it comes back to the planning board, and that's the end of it, right? Hopefully. Except for permitting. So, a lot has gone on, and a lot's finished, but the applicant was pleased with the council's decisions, and, Colin, do we think we're going to see that next month, or we don't know if they'll be ready?
No, I haven't gotten anything yet.
Okay.
Now, maybe Andy could help with this. There were several items listed that I call variances, other people have different names for them. You know, one of them was the height, one of them was the setbacks, front yard setback, side yard setback, all of that, you know, they were all listed, and what we were told last month is this is an all or nothing deal. You know, when the council approves it, they're approving everything, or, you know, like, they can't pick and choose. Last night, at another meeting that I was at, I was told by another council member, and a former council member, that what was approved at the council meeting was only the height, and the no retail on the first floor. Everything else is still an open issue.
I don't know about that.
Well, what I understand, it comes back to the planning board, and then that's where you go through the other one. So, I think it was approved by the council, the only two that you, that the planning board doesn't have anything to do with is the height.
And the no retail.
And the no retail. All the other ones, you get to decide, so like, if you decide that, you know, the setback isn't right, you can say no to that, but I think that's after our.
I will, let me address, I knew up to the point where it came here and the ordinance. One of the goals of redevelopment and the redevelopment plan, and I hate using that word because that's the redevelopment ordinance, we all know that, the redevelopment ordinance for the area provides that there's only limited ability for an applicant to seek variances. There are some, but they're very limited, and what that does is that maintains control of redevelopment in the governing body. So, the governing body sets that zoning redevelopment plan, and any variations from it, this board really can't do much, they've maintained that authority, and so if you want to vary from it, it has, you have to change the plan, so it has to become a conforming application. So, it went through the redevelopment agency, and they booked out the plans that they want to submit, and then they had the planner, and their, and the applicant's plan, or an engineer, go through it and say, okay, if we submitted this site plan, we're going to need these seven variances, and we can't get them, we have to change the plan so it becomes conforming. So, they drafted an ordinance to amend the redevelopment plan to change those regulations, so it was a conforming application. That was the goal and the purpose, so this board will not be considering variances on any of those issues, because it's now, we're still, so that, I didn't see what was actually passed, I don't know if they amended it. That was the goal, that was how it was drafted originally, was to be that.
We did amend the redevelopment plan. That's what that ordinance is for.
That's what was amended to make it a conforming application.
Yes, so, but it does come back here just because the fire department has to look at all of that stuff comes back.
Comes back to the site plan, oh, yeah.
Okay, site plan.
You have all of your site plan functions, it has to come here through a site plan, and you have safety, and always have safety, circulation, those things, because there's always stuff that isn't thought about, oh, that's too close to the fence, there's no way that'll work, there's always those things, yes. That, the municipal man who's law and the redevelopment laws always make it clear, they always have to come get site plan from the board, yes.
And we can't, for example, decide that, huh, four stories is too much, we want a long way out three.
No. It's a conforming application.
And the only thing I think that could change is that, right now, they're, they're hoping that they get those eight spots, and they say that they should, but they can't give them something they don't have yet, you know, the county project hasn't been built yet. So, you know, if something happens and they don't get those eight spots, they have to go down to, I think it's in their, in their plan.
Yeah, because they don't have the parking. If they get the parking, then they'll go one straight up, safe footprint, just move up. It's preset, though, you can do this without them, you can do this with them, so whatever the decision there or not.
Should we put 17 or 23?
Or 23.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, that's the difference.
Yeah, and if they don't get the spots, the 23 is off the table, but again, we don't get to choose that, we get to do site plan stuff.
Yes.
How's the timing going?
So, to proceed with some of the new ones, when the application comes through.
Will they be able to make that decision before the ones actually built?
What two projects?
Well, they're getting eight spots from the county. They won't come, they won't come to this board until they know they have the eight from the county.
Okay.
Because it'd be foolish for them to come and then have to amend it again, so they're going to work to get that, submit, I would assume, that'd be the best, submit the application once they know exactly.
So, once the application is received, we'll have a letter from Passaic County with the parking, we'll have the plans, it goes through Colliers, go through the review, so for anybody that's new, you will see, I will send you the application, you will see all the, all the, the fire department, the MUA, you'll see all those letters of what their decision is, and you'll see all that, so that's, you know, so that's what the planning board's next step is. Only, I'm just explaining it because I know she's, you know, she has never seen the application before.
It's good to rehash it all, anyway, because there's, there's defined responsibilities, and neither the council or the redevelopment can cross ours, and we can't cross theirs. So, it has to be done in the succession that it was done, and then ours is the final set. Whenever, whenever we're done with it, then that's, that takes care of all of the things, unless we have problems with something on our, on our hearing, so assuming that they've got no problems at that point, then that becomes final.
That's when they, that's when you make your vote, but you'll see everything come through before you.
One of the things I should note, for those that weren't at the meeting, it's interesting, pilots work in a, it's an odd thing, it's payment in lieu of taxes, so, rather, and this is also for the guys as well, when a pilot is, is prepared, it's basically saying that, well, we're not going to pay the regular taxes, we're going to pay this payment, it's fixed for whatever the pilot arrangement is, so the number of years, the amount per year is put into like a, like a margin, I guess, right? And it's locked up.
It's an agreement that has to be over 10%, and few other rules, but yes, it's agreed upon amount for the length of time, it can be up to 30 years.
So, if, if the project stayed fallow, as it is right now, the taxes are, I think, what'd they say, six something, $6,000 a year, something like that, and it would be obviously worthless to the town as far as income, and if we did a, there was a big discussion about 20-year pilot versus 30-year pilot, and the big discussion on that was which is better for the town, and what comfortable, what comfort level does the council have between the 20 and the 30-year, and there were some proponents of the 20-year, and some proponents of the 30-year, but they had a very good presentation by a member that they brought in, you know who?
Phoenix.
Phoenix, yeah, and he did a really nice presentation about how that works, and what it turns out to is, by going with the 30-year pilot, the total cost, amount of money that the borough's going to get is two and a half million dollars over those 30 years, as compared to less than half that if it was 20 years. So, and of course, next to nothing if nothing is done. So, there was, there's an awful lot of incentive in this particular project, small project, still a lot of money over 30 years, two and a half million dollars, it'll help a lot with our taxes, and that's why these larger buildings that are being built are so important. Whatever you can get approved under a pilot becomes a, a value that the borough takes advantage of. 100% of the taxes that we pay get split up by town, county, and school system, and a couple other minor ones. So, of that, the borough keeps about a quarter, it's a little bit more, I think, but it's about a quarter.
It's like 25%, no, it's 25%.
25%. So, out of $1,000 that you pay, 250 goes to the town, maybe 220 goes to the county, and then everything else goes to the school. So, out of $1,000, we spend 250 here. With the pilot and the redevelopment process, we get 95% of that money, and 5% goes to the county. So, all of a sudden, that money that we would have been getting 25% of, we now get 95% of, the care you have to take is that you don't, because you're taking money from the school and the county, you can't overload the school without some kind of dealing with that issue. So, I think what would happen is, and most of these projects we're approving are not high school level projects, it's been proven through many studies, they're token amounts, right?
On the apartments, workers did a study, typically, the apartments that they're talking here don't generate a lot of school age kids, that's a rule, it's a, it's not a hard and fast, it's a general rule statistically, they don't.
That's based on studies?
Yes.
Of real life?
Of reality, yeah, after the fact.
So, what it comes down to is that extra money that we're going to keep is not something we're taking from the school, because they still get their full share of the base.
Yeah, the school gets paid first before anything else.
Right.
It's what this does, what a pilot does, is put, the revenue that comes into the town goes into the town's bank account, does not go to the school, it's kind of segregated out, but the school still submits a bill and gets paid, it's just if you have 1,000 pieces of the property, all paying taxes and the normal ordinary taxes, and you have them run pilot, so you have 999. Now, what happens is the tax assessments to, the school comes up with a bill, and you have to assess properties in order to pay all your bills, that's going to get paid by 900, the assessments on 999 pieces of property, not the one that is exempt, that's going to pay some cash that goes into a separate account. So, as long as, and Phoenix advisors, I've worked with them before in other towns, they're very good at looking at things like this, so you look at your school system, and look at costs that might be generated, look at your study being one, other ones you look at, all right, our school system, if it's going to be, it's going to be for, you know, kids aged one to six, but they don't talk to the school system, now we have, all of our, you know, 1-2-6 schools still have five seats, so you're not, you're not going to be creating another need for another teacher for another class, there's no real cost there, they go through that analysis to make sure that what you're getting, that goes into the separate account, is at or above any additional cost that will be imposed upon the town by this development. That's, that's really the break even, you want to make sure, Phoenix is very, they're very good at doing that analysis, that's, that's the analysis in a nutshell that you should do for a, for a pilot.
And I would assume that if, if they're looking at, let's say, 20-year versus 30-year, the town, from their perspective, they would look at, yes, obviously, right now, the taxes are six grand or whatever, but over a 10-year period, 20 years in the future, what would that tax revenue be, and still try to make it as favorable for the town, as opposed to leaving, you know, a very large chunk of money in potential taxes.
Yeah, you make assumptions on what's going to go up at what rate, that is part of it, absolutely.
It's a very interesting way of helping the boroughs and towns to have the extra money in the town to help with the taxes, because we're getting, you know, by the state, by the federal government, by the county, by the school, and our own, and so it's a way of helping to maintain a little more stability, and as long as you don't go crazy with things, it's good. The other thing I noted on that is that there's a lot of multi, word is properly, many peopled houses in town, and those many peopled houses produce more kids than these apartments do. So, you may find that a typical, 30 years ago, a typical one-family home, got two kids, maybe had three, and now you find out that that one-family home may have six or seven kids because there's more than one family living there. So, I think you see more impact on the school system from that unknown than we do on something that's known like this, because that never gets picked up. It's almost like having a multi-family house in a single-family zone. So, I think that does more impact to the school than these things do. Any questions? I mean, this is just good for understanding how things are going. We had two pilots that are in effect right now, three, I think, right? We have the West Side Avenue, we have the one on 25 Marquis, which is by the firehouse, and then we have the one that's in progress with the big project, and then there's another one in effect yet, right?
Hamburg, there's one on Hamburg.
Oh, yes, one on Hamburg, that's right.
Number one.
Yeah, that's a smaller, right? So, those are all actually working towards open.
525 doesn't have a plan. I don't think 525 has a plan.
I thought it was.
Yes, the one by the firehouse, by the desk.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, they did. That was, the, the one about that, it wasn't completely built, so you have to take into account the improvements that are put into the absolute pilot.
Any, any other questions about that process?
I'll ask a dumb question that they.
There are no dumb questions.
No. But it, it seems like the 30-year pilot has a lot more money than the 20-year pilot, and it seems like that's kind of a no-brainer for the town. It's also a no-brainer that we would want to have more money coming into the town than not, which is why we look for these pilot-type programs. The only question is, if it's so clear that you get so much more money with the 30-year than with the 20-year, then what is the argument for the shorter term? Is it just timing of the cash flow, is it just getting it quicker? I'm wondering if you have any information on that.
I think it's just preference, right?
Yeah, I mean, pilots are, were not designed as benefits to municipalities on their cash flow, that is a byproduct of it. What they are, so I'm going to give like a big, like 50,000 view of them, there's this understanding, you know, properties get run down, they need to be redeveloped, you know, lots of different build we have for, it's because the regular zoning isn't working, and so that's why redevelopment exists, and you can kind of negotiate, you can change the zoning, do things, sometimes that doesn't even help, so what the legislature did is create, you know, financial agreements or. So, what the legislature did is create, you know, financial agreements or payment of taxes, which allows you to give financial, a financial assistance to a property by changing the tax structure. So, that's what it is. So, it is a, it is designed to, to, as another tool to offer downtrodden properties to, to, to get...
Make them more appealing to a redeveloper.
Exactly. They, so, you know, just changing the zoning is enough because there's some other financial hole that this property has. That's what it's designed for and just changes the tax structure. So, it's no longer taxes, it is this agreed upon amount that you do. And the relative benefit over 10, 15, 30 years is, is mostly a function of negotiating what it's gonna be and taking into account, all right, 30 years from now, the normal taxes would be X as opposed to 20 years, it would be something less than that. The difference that they're paying by assuming that the rents are gonna go up 2% a year, it kind of grows at the end. There's just a, there are a lot of variables. It's really just negotiating. Because you can, um, there is a, you have, the way you set the annual service charge is it has to be a minimum of 10% of the revenue that you bring in. It can be 11, it can be 28%. Essentially, you have to negotiate what, you know, the amount that this, that they'll still invest by paying a certain percentage of their annual gross revenue. And the reason it is, what benefits show from years 20 or 30 is because that's the, the numbers that Phoenix said, this project can afford that. So, let's, let's, let's charge them 14% or 13% in those years. I didn't see the limit, but that's what it is. It's a, a byproduct of negotiating a good deal at the end of the, at the end of the, the rest of, the rest of the years.
Okay. It also sets a fixed amount. So, they know at the, at the project, that this is gonna be their expense. There's no...
Much easier to sell.
And so, you basically have, you basically have a fixed payment, like the mortgage would be. Where every, every month is gonna be this amount of money, it's predetermined. And the town also has a fixed amount of money coming in. So, it kind of makes life a little easier all around. There is a financial incentive to the project owner to get the pilot and there's a, an incentive for the borough to give the pilot to. So, it, it kind of helps, as you kind of said, it, it kind of makes the project doable where, you know, without that, it may never get done. And I wish we could get a few more buildings in this town to go through this. We have some very dilapidated buildings that are, from the fire department's perspective, that are very risky. And I wish there was a way we could do something with them, but, you know, we're not the property owners.
I think a lot of times the 20 versus the 30 is that, um, people need financing for this. So, if they're gonna finance the entire project and they're gonna go for a loan for $6 million from the bank, the bank isn't really gonna give them the loan unless they have a 30-year pilot. Because that's when their mortgage will be paid off in 30 years.
Okay. So, it's a timing matching thing?
It's a, yes.
It's complex, but it works. And it generally works to the favor of both parties. And, um, you know, we're taking advantage of it and hope, hope that it'll continue. Where there are other people that are interested in doing things, the Washington Building, which is on the corner of Marneque Avenue and, um, Colfax. It's a beige brick building. It's an old, old building. It's probably 100 years old. That one is gonna have a project, but that's not gonna be a pilot, right? This guy's gonna rebuild.
Without a pilot.
They're gonna put a floor up above, they're gonna reframe inside to support it and they're gonna fix it up and it's gonna look a whole lot nicer. That'll help that corner. And then the opposite side of the street, from the ice cream station down to Marneque Avenue, there's another property owner that's looking to bring the project to, uh, to the town that will replace all of those buildings with some additional redevelopment work. And I think there was another one that was kind of like debating. And then we had the one that hit it work, which was the big one that would have been, as you come down Colfax to the T intersection straight ahead of you. That would have been a project with that 11-story. That one building?
The one with 15 is first.
Yeah.
Yes. That moved up.
But that's all to take care of that, so.
Just so you know too, I, at another meeting that I was at last night, it was discussed that the owner of the Krausers, I'm pretty sure.
Yes.
Is looking to put a second floor on top of that building.
Well, that's what's waiting to come to the board.
What was that car?
Well, that's what's on the agenda.
It did have a second story on it years ago.
Uh, he wants to put like, I don't know, town apartments up there or something.
Well, honestly, it's the whole thing.
Just the Krausers. Because where that alley separates, they're two separate.
Two separate arms.
Okay. Two separate arms, so only on the half, that's the Krausers.
So, not all the way to the...
Which is from the beach and the place to the corner where the auto parts store is Ronnie Lucas. He's never gonna do it.
They should work out a deal.
They should.
Yep. Here's another problem area where, you know, it's illegal to have that kind of parking now. You know, having direct access to a main road like that from a parking stall is frowned upon tremendously.
The telephone pole sticking out the window?
Yeah.
Supposedly, there's gonna be parking garages too as well. Well, I don't know how they're gonna build a parking garage. $60,000 a spot.
The, um, the whole thing is they bring, they bring, but it's a vow for consideration and it gets bounced around. And if it's a redevelopment project, it gets bounced around more. So, we wait and see what comes and then we get our turn.
Good. I'll ask another question. How many, you, you mentioned a bunch. How many concurrent projects are going on, uh, right now in the, in the downtown?
What do you mean concurrents projects? How many are going concurrent?
Yes.
Just one is actually under construction, that's it.
Well, there's two.
There's two, there's the old CJN building.
Oh, right. They, they got CJN here.
Yes. It's, it's a lot to forget about. I've seen it like that for 10 years.
There's two. I think that, that also in the redevelopment, like you like to see it happen fast, but think about when all of these projects start ending all at the same time, that's gonna be a big chunk of money that the borough doesn't have anymore. It's gonna all go away, almost all at the same time.
I don't follow you.
So, you're getting 95% of something, right?
Oh, you mean in 30 years or whatever?
Yes.
Oh, oh, oh. Then you get...
So, we're all around 30 years.
There's a potential tax, you know? It's not like they don't pay taxes.
Yes, but it's still not gonna be as much because then you'll only get 25% of that.
Yes.
So, it's not...
So, those people 30 years from now have to be thinking.